La punta del concilio de las ciudades por los autorizadores, favoritos de nuestras hijas, sonderos, todos los padres que les tienen todo el control de todo, y no se va a poner a ningún tipo de asesoramiento, de especial o de cortoso, que no siga esta presión, se desahoga de poder ser examinado.
Also, anyone that signed in to speak, if you would just speak into the microphone, all the recording is going on during the actual meeting, so if you have, if you're told right here, you can extend this mic towards your left and speak into it, that would help with all recordings so that we can do it online, and you can hear simple.
Six oh one, the meeting is now called to order. Ms. Marine, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of court.
Rene Rodriguez.
Here.
Sister Nevares.
Here.
Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez Isaxa, and Ivan Colombia Loos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court.
Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers. Our first speaker is Sergio Jaime.
Bueno, el propósito de mi visita aquí, ¿verdad? Me ha retirado por cosas personales, pero ya estoy de vuelta, y necesito que, por favor, escuchen los regidores, que ya basta de tanta corrupción con tantos contratos que quieren dar a las compañías, que quieren hacer departamentos y todo eso. Eso no es justo, señores, ya basta, ya. Aquí de lo que tiene que hacer, por favor, y yo le pido a la alcaldesa que, por favor, empiece a inspeccionar todos sus trabajadores, qué es lo que están haciendo, y necesitamos que usted esté presente allí, no nomás que venga de visita, ¿me entiende? Tiene que saber qué es lo que está pasando con el concilio, con la administración, con la City Clark, y con todos los demás. Le sugiero que, por favor, ponga atención a esas cosas, y también yo le pido a mi representante que nos consigan una junta abierta porque la están pidiendo nuestros vecinos, no pudieron venir algunos, pero para la junta abierta necesito que haya una junta abierta porque allí es el tiempo suficiente para poder discutir, necesito que esté el LAR, la ECH, todos, la administración, la City Clark, y el representante que es mi representante, también le pido a la Distrito Cuatro que, por favor, ayuden a hacer esto, ya no estén apoyando cosas que están cometiendo la corrupción, seguimos con los mismos, señores. Metí una aplicación, mi representante la puso, y es para una pavimentación en la área y no han hecho nada. Es un marronero lo que tenemos allí de casas, no hay quien limpie. Eso está dando un mal aspecto en Socorro, pero sí quieren estar dando permisos para afincar nuevas áreas, ¿no? Por favor, ya basta, señores. Pónganse las pilas, investiguen qué es lo que están haciendo el concilio, la administración, y la mayor, que, por favor, tengan ya conciencia de que no es justo que estén pasando ya tantas cosas sin responsables como ha permitido el LAR. Todo es a cuenta de él, que ha sido todo el culpable, y la administración, cómo está corriendo la ciudad, y para muestras un botón, ya vieron lo que pasó con el hijo de la señora. Entonces, en esos momentos, ustedes no deberían de haberle dado la posición otra vez de nuevo, si no lo hubieran suspendido hasta nueva investigación y que se...
Sr. Jaime, se le terminó su tiempo.
Bernie Salcido. Mr. Salcido, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies, madam mayor and council. I'm here for item number fifteen with the Vista Bonita subdivision. I think that we should postpone this for tonight. We're still trying to negotiate and come to a good conclusion on this. We did have a meeting this week with Conde Engineering Group and their lawyers. We also had a representative mayor was here as well. We're still working on it, trying to work through the details. On the wording, there wasn't anything on the proposed proposal that they had submitted as to the rock wall that we all had agreed on. They did come out and say that it was included in it, but it wasn't in the verbiage. We came to a conclusion that they are going to include this rock wall in the verbiage and to be constructed as part of the development. And, of course, we're all wanting to see this in writing before any decision is rendered on this subdivision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Item number five, presentation from El Paso Center for Children on the Uprising of Human Sex Trafficking Awareness by Vicky J. Maestas, LBSW Youth Advocate Specialized Treatment Home.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I just want to say thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight, and I have some colleagues with me as well that can also give you some idea of other programs that El Paso Center for Children gives. What I do myself, I do work with El Paso Center for Children. I am a specialized treatment foster home for teen girls that have been victims of sex trafficking. So I'm a huge youth advocate for sex trafficking, and I want to thank Ms. Phil Lobos. She heard our presentation last week or a couple of weeks ago and asked us to bring it here to y'all so that y'all could actually see what goes on right here in our backyard. So, first of all, what I wanted to do is show the video. There's a video. It is a graphic video somewhat, but I think it really depicts exactly what goes on, and what is going on right here in El Paso County and the surrounding areas, and then after the video, then I'll just add a few points about sex and human trafficking. Okay? Thank you. So, as we see in this, it's not, the reason that I showed this video is because it shows that it's not always that this particular young man is what we would call a Romeo, because that most of the times the girls just want somebody to love them. And so, in Texas, and what I really wanted to bring to your attention is Texas is the number two leading states in our nation for sex trafficking. And so I put some just statistics, I mean, just some facts here that I got from 2017, is the last that I have. We've been the leading second state in the nation for the past five years. California is number one, and Florida is number three. Why do you think it's that away? What I believe is that I-ten stretches is the only interstate in the United States that stretches from one coast to the other, and Texas is right in between. El Paso is one of their stops. El Paso is number thirteen. Houston is number one in the United States for calls to the national hotline for sex trafficking. Dallas is number nine, Austin, San Antonio, and we are, I thought it was thirteen, but it could be like, maybe like sixteen, is El Paso. What I believe is one of those reasons is because of the interstate. We're a stop, where they have to buy gasoline, where they have to have a hotel room to sleep, because what they do is, once they get to Houston, they're exchanging. Somebody comes from Florida, somebody comes from California, they have girls, they exchange in Houston, and they go back. In all of the human trafficking, they have a lot of different calls for that. Human trafficking can be domestic, where they're holding someone up in a home as a maid, and not letting them leave, but sex trafficking, in that sex trafficking is almost seventy percent of the calls that they get. And in El Paso, what we've seen is, how many of y'all have seen the massage parlors and spas that pop up in the little strip, little, what do you call those, shopping centers, right? And, you know, and I tell people all the time, I know as a woman, I'm gonna go and get a massage at eleven-thirty at night, because those massage parlors open up at ten o'clock. That's not what they are. That's where we're seeing these young girls under the age of eighteen years old that are being held in these massage parlors, and that's where a lot of the sex trafficking is. Hotels are fourteen percent of them, and residents are ten percent, where they're held inside of a home, okay? One of our biggest trafficking areas is right up the road from y'all in Horizon. Why do y'all think Horizon is big? Because that's where you have truck stops. I've been working with this population for several years now. A lot of the girls that run, how do you think they get from, I had a young lady that was in Houston, how do you think she got back to El Paso? In a truck. Do you think they brought her to El Paso? No, they did not. They brought her to the border, and they took her across the bridge, and they were trafficking her in what is. Why? Because she was fourteen years old, and a businessman in a suit will cross over the bridge for a fourteen-year-old, but won't buy one here in El Paso. The average age of a teenage victim is thirteen to fourteen years old. Sixty percent of these children, females, or males, because males are not an exception for this, are in our foster care system. Why? Because all they want is to have a home. They want to have a normal home with someone that lives there. El Paso, yes. I have had so many people in the last seven years tell me, well, El Paso really doesn't have a problem with that. Yes, we do. Where the interstate travel, the border, domestic and homes, I've dealt with grandmothers and grandfathers and mothers that are trafficking their little girls for rent, for utilities, for food, because they don't think it's anything wrong with it. They don't see that as sex trafficking. They just see that as a means of putting something on their table, or to have a place to sleep. One of the largest rings that was busted here in El Paso was at one of our high schools. I don't know if y'all heard about that. Was it Letta High School? You can look it up on the news, I mean, on the internet, it was on there. The way they started is across the street from El Paso High. There's a McDonald's that sits there. There's a man that sat in there, and what did he do? He looked at the youth, the girls, that were coming in that didn't have the money to buy themselves a lunch, and then he would say, hey, you know, hey, I got money for you today. I'll buy you a burger. He got some young men that were seniors, juniors and seniors at El Paso High, and they started a prostitution ring in El Paso High. It's Letta, I'm sorry, El Paso, sorry. It's Letta. Thank you, thank you. So these are what pimps look like, right? This is what I always say, poor Snoop Doggy, I just put him on because I just think he's cute, you know? These are what our pimps look like these days. No. These are what our pimps look like. They're people that these young women trust. They're people that these women think love them. And this is just where they come from. Some of our strip clubs here in El Paso, on any given weekend, you can go in, and they say these girls, or I don't even know how old you have to be, you know, praise God to strip, but, you know, we've gone in and there's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old girls in our strip clubs here in El Paso County. And people ask me all the time about the motels and the hotels. I live in the northeast area, and so I really get hurt, Claudia and I do, when people talk about how that it's my hood, you know, that they have all the prostitutes and all the bad stuff that goes on. Some of the last two hotels that we busted with teenage prostitutes in them was the Motel Six and the La Quinta right here on I-ten. Why? Because they were right here on I-ten. Why is it such a problem? There's a supply and demand for it. If there wasn't a supply and demand, we wouldn't have it. I have people ask me all the time, well, the drugs are a lot worse than these teen, you know, sex trafficking. And I go, no, they're not. This is a billion, multi-billion-dollar industry. And I tell people, if I have a kilo of cocaine, that, you know, we get it a lot across the border, I can sell that to you one time for however much it's worth, five thousand dollars, and it's gone. But if I have a young lady, I can sell her over and over and over again. So there's a supply and demand. Until we get rid of that, we don't get rid of our problem. So what can you do? Be aware. Don't be afraid to ask. I am the world's worst about being at an airport, or being at Chico's Tacos, and seeing some young girls with a man that I just, it just doesn't look right, and I can, and I'll walk up to them and say, are you okay? Are you doing all right? You know? Just ask. I'd rather ask and look stupid, or somebody, you know, say, hey, why are you asking me that? Than I would not ask somebody, okay? And if there's ever anyone that you know, or you yourself find it, and it's a calling, I swear to you, it's a calling. And it's something that you have to know in your heart that you're being asked to do by a higher power than yourself, then give these girls a home. Is it easy? No, it's not. I've had several in my home, I've had several leave, I've had several stay. So, give them a home. And that's just my references, so I can reference where I got my information. Here's the hotline, guys, take it down. Don't be afraid to call. Make for sure that if you see something that doesn't look right, just call. There's no harm in calling, okay? It's anonymous. No one will find out that you're calling, just make the call. And so I want to turn it over to Claudia for just a minute, so she can tell you about if you know someone that wants to open up a specialized foster home, or any foster home, then she knows that part. I just...
Good evening. My name is Claudia Rosco, and I work with the El Paso Center for Children. I don't know how many of you know we even exist. We always get confused with the Child Crisis Center, but the child, El Paso Child, oh my gosh, I just had a moment. Okay, anyway, so we have a great CEO. She writes out these amazing grants that allow us to help our community. So we have the therapeutic homes, which is the regular foster homes, and we have children between the ages of newborn to seventeen. They come into our homes, and we provide care for them. We also have the specialized foster homes that Vicky mentioned, and these are girls that are probably about fourteen and over. We do have, we, there are males. We haven't had one come into our care as of yet, but we do have the specialized foster care. We also have the shelter, the emergency shelter for the teens. They're welcome to come to shelter. It's free food, a place to stay, a warm bath that they get to have. We also have the street outreach. Street outreach comes out to the community, so if you know of any teens that are out, and you know they're homeless, please give us a call. We will be more than happy. We have a great team that comes out every night and every day, and if we get a call, we will investigate, we will try to get these teens a place to stay. And we also know that there's teens that are living in homes or couch surfing, so they just kind of stay the night, so we also help them. We have the STAR program that offers counseling to our kids, and that's also free of charge. We have the rapid rehousing. Rapid rehousing helps children that are eighteen and over who have fostered out of care. We try to find them a place to stay. The only requirement for them is that they go to school or that they work. So we offer various services within our program that we hope you guys will take the time to read and know about us. And we also have a wish list that if you guys are interested, we need even just the basics, like for the kids that are in the rapid rehousing, I mean, it's a bed, it's a mattress, it's a pillow, it's a pan, dishes, you know, to get them started. If you have something like that, we will be more than happy to come by and pick it up. We also are looking for food, because, of course, we have the shelter, and we have to provide care for them, and so we ask for the food. We do have a wish list. I'm not sure if we've passed it around yet, but we do have a wish list. And so we thank you so much for allowing us to be here, and letting you know that we're here, and, I mean, we're here to help our community. Whatever it is you all need, please give us a call, and I thank you so much for your time. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Ellos?
Thank you, ladies, for coming out and sharing this with us. And I just want to tell everybody that's here, the reason I wanted them to come out there is sometimes we are in the community and we have seen things, but we don't have resources of where to send them, what to do, and so this is now an outlet that, you know, we have, we know that you are here. I can think of a couple of incidents from the beginning, from when I started being a councilwoman, that we could have utilized your services, but we didn't know where to go. And my understanding is, it doesn't matter if they're from El Paso, from Horizon, from Socorro...
Exactly. Within the El Paso community, we're willing to help them. And we are also, in the future, opening a transitional living center for women and children to come into care also if they need a place to stay. So that's another grant that our amazing CEO is working on, and hopefully we'll be able to offer that service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, we would like to move the following items up: twenty-one, sixteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two.
Could we do twenty-two before twenty?
We can do twenty-two before twenty.
Can you give the order again, sir, please?
Sure. So we're gonna do, we're gonna move up fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two before twenty, and twenty-one.
Second.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. Victor Perez arrived to the meeting at six-twenty-eight. Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Sister Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Loos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to direct staff to look into the Socorro Independent School District building located in the corner of Tanton and Middle Drain for possible leasing opportunity for the police department.
Mayor, before we take the vote, I need to ask Jim some questions on this item for executive.
Should we have the presentation first, and then move into executive?
Yes, but that's what I'm saying.
Mayor, city council, city manager, I'm here from the Socorro Independent School District, I'm Rafael Padilla, and I am here to answer any questions you might have regarding this building. This building is our maintenance and operations facility that we've held for a few years. In fact, I think it's been about two decades now. The Socorro Independent School District is looking at relocating our maintenance and operations departments to a more centralized location, more specifically near our stadium. So there might be an opportunity for any entity to make use of this building.
So we were approached by Socorro ISD for the building, and, you know, we thought, well, maybe for a police department, since they're, you know, they have two locations, actually three with Vineyard. If we can all put them together in one area, but we would need council's blessing in order for us to do a walkthrough and see if it's even equipped for something like that. I know that in the past, we have leased, have had leasing agreements with Socorro ISD, and it's something that is used, it's very common.
The last lease that we had with the city of Socorro was back in the year two thousand, which lasted up into twenty-ten, and it was for the two facilities that we had in Socorro, the old municipal court building and the old fire station. And back then, the lease was, there was arrangement, made with the school district, where the lease at that time was only a dollar a year. Of course, it's up to the school board to determine what the lease amount would be. This building is about one hundred eighty-four thousand square feet, which is about roughly the size of a super Walmart. As far as office space, it has maybe about fifty thousand square feet, which is about a little more than an acre of office space. The area immediately where the building sits, it's about seven acres. We also have an additional seven acres across the street. And this building is, it's fully fire sprinkled. It has video surveillance, and it also has an intrusion alarm. I know your police department has frequently gone to this building for training with other police departments.
Ms. Ellos?
You know, I'm just gonna come out and say it. Last year, when you guys were doing your wish list on whether what projects we, you guys, meaning the Socorro Independent School District...
Yes.
You guys had a wish list, and I happened to be there when we looked at this building. My question for the attorney, but then I'm just gonna just straight up say it here. You know, one of the things that you guys are looking into, and, not you, nothing against you, because I don't kill the mailman, okay? But one of the things is that, the reason why you guys are moving your IT from here, the excuse they gave us was because they didn't want to spend a million dollars to repair the roof. That's what I was told, okay? So I had a dilemma, that's why I didn't agree on it in the first place, because this is a good building. It's vacant. I saw it with my own eyes, you know? And the issue is, is that, did you guys already modify the building or the roof? Because the excuse that we got, because you guys, the school district representatives were pitching because it was a lot of an expense to do the roof. Now, if we do want to enter into this, because this is a great, it's great. I mean, we could house everything we can in there, you know? And I want council to know, because I've seen it with my own eyes. But one of the things is that, if they didn't do the roof, and we go rent it, and we come into an agreement, are we gonna be hold to fixing all of those, or are you guys gonna do it before we enter an agreement? Because those are things that I need to know before I make, we make an agreement, and I guess that we have to let our administration go out and look at all of these things. That's the only issue I have, is that you guys wanted to move the IT because of the, yes. So, all I want to know is that, depending on where we're going to, or how much space we're going to, is, are you guys gonna repair the roof? And that's basically what I was gonna ask Jim, if we were gonna be liable for it, or stuff like that. Those are the issues that I have. But it's a good idea. I'm not knocking it, I'm just saying, you know, I just want administration to know that that's what we were told, and we need to look at that, and I think that if we decide to go ahead and do this, for administration to really know and say, hey, you know, we were told this, did you guys repair the roof? Other than that, it's good. I just wanted to put my two cents in there.
And all we're asking is for permission to explore, right? Walk the facility and see, and then work out an agreement, so we can come back to council and say, yes, it's a good, a good...
And like I said, you know, I just want you guys to know that there was an issue with the roof. I want to know if it was already repaired, or that if we go into an agreement, and then we're liable for it. That's what I want to know. I want you guys to know that when... That's what I want to know. I want you guys to know that when you go into and explore, I want you to have that mindset to say, hey, one of our council members came, and this is the issue that you guys told them. Did you guys fix it? And we can talk, and that's it. That's all I want.
And we would work out that in the agreement, if that's something that we want to.
Ms. Ellos?
And I have several questions.
Sure.
Number one to our, to our staff, the three buildings that we have right now where we have our different police units, are they owned?
Yes, the one on Rio Vista is historical protected, and it is old. And we are, we are very limited with space.
No, I mean, we own the buildings.
Correct.
We, okay, we own the buildings. Number one, I, I could see so much potential. And this would definitely go in the direction we want the city to go into. Is this, will this building ever be for sale?
That's something that would be up to the school board. I know the, in the past, the school district has had a number of buildings appraised. And in the end, the, the school district has kept a lot of those buildings and parcels of land for the future. But then this one, it's totally, it's totally dependent on the school board and their wishes.
Okay. And I, you know.
Currently, currently, the school district has, we do have one facility that's under lease to a trucking company. And that's the, that's the, on Joel Battle, the Police Services Department. We had a large number of area back there that the school district is leasing to the trucking company. So one of the things that the school district wants to see is what the potential is for this building. If it's not with the City of Socorro, it can be any other entity or business.
And so I, for everyone that's here, I, I prefer purchasing versus leasing. Because then, you know, at one point, if, if it's just gonna continue to be a lease and we have to move out, then we, we're gonna have to refind space for our police. But also, if we vote on just exploring, and I would love for, for council to be included the day that you do preview the building and those that want to be there, would be, would be nice for us to be there to also preview the building with, with staff.
That would be a council decision.
Yes.
I mean, normally council does not get involved with the administration part of it. But you're all, I mean, if you all agree, you can bring an item.
And so I'm asking that we, if we do decide to move forward to just to preview, that we include.
I might add that this is a two-story building, and it also contains a basement.
So.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So, you know, if you guys want to preview it, that's fine, as long as we don't interfere with administration to do their jobs, you know, that's it.
I don't see how that is just.
No, 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 I know. That's what I'm saying. Let them do their thing. If anybody wants to, I think we just say yes, and that's it. Is there a motion?
No.
If it's just for information purposes, I will leave. Are there any other questions regarding this building? And to answer that question on the technology, when you're, when you're housing tens of millions of dollars of servers, you need a more secure location to put it. And this, this building is, was built as an industrial building. So it's not always secure. So the best place is to put it housed in an area that's, has limited access. And now we.
No, no, and, and I don't, and I don't, I don't disagree, you know? The school district did, you know, spend fifteen million dollars on that room on IT. That's what I was told. Now, if it's otherwise, then somebody lied. But when I was told, it was fifteen million dollars, and it was well spent. But, you know, if, you know, I don't sit on the school board. But one of the things is, is that, you know, it's unfortunate that everything that was built in Socorro is no longer in Socorro. It's a shame, but I understand. We have to keep up with growth. And there's no knock at you, like I said.
Oh, I know, I know.
And I got nothing against the messenger. But the only issue that I'm, I'm bringing up is the roof.
And this one is.
That's it. I'll just let administration, you know, handle that. And that's it. I just want them to know, be aware that that was an issue. And that's the issue that they said, that that's why they wanted to move the IT department. And that's it. I just want them to know that, you know, we have to have that in mind as well.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things with this building, it has a double gable, so it has a channel in the middle. So as long as that, as long as that channel's kept clean, there shouldn't be any issues.
Ms. Ellos?
We do have several divisions within maintenance and operations at our house, house here. One of the, one of the, I guess one of the divisions that makes great use of this is our grounds department, since they have an area there to, to store dirt. And it's, it's a great location. In fact, we also added an automotive garage. We service our own, our own automobiles, which saves us a lot of money.
And so we didn't get an answer to the roof. Was it repaired already?
The repair, the only thing that the roof needs is continuous maintenance, since we have that channel. And that channel has, well, the issue that we had there is we had a lot of pigeons. And there, there were a lot of pigeons that plugged up the, the drains. So those were cleared out. So, but we do this every six months. We've had some very heavy rainstorms recently, but we haven't had any issues with the roof as far as leaking inside the, the offices like before.
Thank you, sir.
But like I said before, this is, the school district is exploring options. It would be nice if the, another public entity will make use of it. But if it's not, then like I said, the district does have other options.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we allow staff to explore the possibilities of renting this property from the Socorro Independent School District.
And, and would you, if we want to do a walk?
And if any council members would like to walk through, they'd be able to.
Mr. Perez?
In your motion, Mr. Rodriguez? And I know you probably already thought about this, but to have a city inspector be part of the, of the team?
And have a city inspector be part of the team.
Mayor, I do advise against having a quorum of council members attend the walk-through.
Well, if we do a walk-through, we do without a quorum. We can do two walk-throughs, can't we? Okay, so then my motion is the walk-through is without a quorum.
You can, but don't forget the Open Meetings Act also says, but you can't. Well, you can't shuffle people in and out of each walk-through to avoid a quorum for the purpose of avoiding the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, then I'll leave it as without a quorum, whether walking or whatever. Okay. I don't, she, Olivia's got it.
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colonia Loz?
Yes. Item number sixteen?
Oh, thank you.
Discussion? Discussion and action to approve El Paso County Water Improvement District Licenses Agreement for twenty-five years in the amount of thirteen thousand ninety-eight a year, and be increased for each succeeding year of inflation, or a three-year payout for a twenty-five-year license for three hundred twenty-seven thousand four fifty, or a fifty-year license in the amount of six hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred, an authorized city manager or her designee to execute agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a license agreement that we've been working with Mrs. Rodarte on for several months now. It's of great benefit because in the past several years, we've been replacing any culverts that fail, that are your roads. And what, what we're doing is we're letting the city, you all buy the materials, my men and my equipment do all the replacement, which is a great savings to you all. If you all were to go out on contract and, and contract out for these projects, it would be very costly for you. So we're trying to cooperate with you all as much as possible. This is a mirrored agreement that we did with the City of El Paso, and we're currently working one with the County of El Paso. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions if you'd like.
So back in March, I had placed the item on the agenda so we could go out and try, try to work out the inflation rate. And we did go back to them, and we have a twenty-five-year term and a fifty-year term that we've stated that if we pay it out in three consecutive years, if we could lower our inflation, correct? So the numbers are there for your twenty-five years and fifty years. Both with our finance director, we're capable of doing both in, in a three-year period. But it's up to council, and that's why we're coming to council for direction. And then they would still have to take it to their board.
For their.
So we can come to an agreement on that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I didn't, I didn't see it. I didn't have time. But I did see a rough draft back then, when we were in your office. And we were talking about the changes. Does it also include, if we want to, the, the bridges? Do we include that too?
It includes every crossing. Of course, the bridges that you all want to expand, the text dot bridges, are work that's going to be done along with text dot. So we'll be working hand in hand with text dot on that.
Okay.
With text dot, and then there's some that we do need to expand, like the middle drain and, and that one. They do work with us. Like they say, they provide the labor and we just provide the material, which is a great benefit to the city.
That's great. That's great.
And then you also have the option of paying yearly, if you'd like, with a CPI interest rate. It's, it's up to you all.
But in the long run, it's better to pay it twenty, for the fifty years. Any questions?
What does staff recommend?
I mean, we recommend either the twenty-five or the fifty-year, just because you pay for those three years, the inflation, and then you're kind of setting your city up for twenty-five years where we don't have to worry about another agreement or licensing.
We could add a clause in there to renew it after twenty-five years, or right before the twenty-five years is up, for those of you that will be around then.
At this rate.
But that, that's also another option that we could do.
I, I, I think.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I think that if we do the twenty-five, we could add that clause, like Mr. Reyes said. And we can, we can do that. Or if you guys decide to do the fifty-year, you know, we just have to look at our budget, and we know how our budget is. So I, I think that we could do the twenty-five, ease the payment because of our budget constraints. And then we could have that, that stipulated in the contract where we can, a year or two before, we can extend for another twenty-five. I think that, I think that would be the best move for the city. So I would like to make a motion at this time to, what number are we on?
To approve the twenty-five year.
Sixteen.
Oh, number sixteen, yes, to approve the El Paso County Water Improvement District Licensing Agreement for the twenty-five years in the amount of thirteen thousand ninety-eight dollars a year, and to be increased for each succeeding year in the inflation of three-year payment for the next twenty-five years. So with, with an addition to the contract to be added so that we can extend it another twenty-five years.
Ms. Ellos?
Mr. Martinez, I have a question. I, I noticed that there's some things here that, like Rancho Viejo's there and stuff like that. And I, and I do irrigate. I just want to make sure that this is not a conflict of interest. I know there's three of us on this panel that do irrigate, and we are part of this. And just to make sure we're not, as, if we vote tonight, we're not, it's not a conflict of interest.
It's not. You can still vote on it.
We're good.
I appreciate that irrigate. That's very precious to all of us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so what you recited was paying a lump sum. So what we're asking for.
What he recited was yearly payments for twenty-five years.
Oh, no.
Oh, you guys don't want to do that? Okay, then I'll resent my motion. Mr. Casciano, what is it, what you, what you're recommending?
The twenty-five year agreement?
Twenty-five.
With the addition of the twenty-five years after that agreement? With a three-year payout.
So it's a lump sum of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty payable in three annual installments, with the first installment payable upon execution of the license, one hundred and nine thousand one hundred and fifty. The second installment due on April first, two thousand nineteen. And the last installment due April first, two thousand twenty.
With an option to renew for another twenty-five years on the same payment terms.
And that is my option, and that is my.
And I would also recommend to authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute.
To execute the contract. That's my motion. Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Casciano, is that, this is something that it's, that you're okay with?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you, because this is something that we need. And, you know, we've been talking for, since two thousand thirteen about it, and it's, it's something that takes time. And I'm glad that we're gonna be working together a lot better than what previous city administration. So I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. And it's been a pleasure working with Ms. Rodarte. She, you know, we meet often. She communicates with us. I communicate with her. So I just wanted to pass that on to council.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action to adopt Resolution five forty-three that where the City of Socorro pledges to support this initiative that the El Paso County Water Improvement District for their grant application to the United States Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Small Scale Efficiency Program for fiscal year two thousand eighteen Efficiency Grants Program for an improvement project, Isla Lateral.
This is a, a grant application that the Irrigation District has put together and we're submitting to the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. It's for a hundred thousand dollars, but that'll help us finish from Horizon on the Isla Lateral, where you all have your tickets, what, fifteen acres or thirty-eight?
Correct, right behind Walgreens?
Yes.
Behind Walgreens. That will concrete line the spot that's, is eroded right now. And, and that'll finish it out all the way to the north loop, which will prevent ditch breaks and other issues. I've been working with Ms. Rodarte on, and she's gonna get back to me on whether you all want to turn out into your acreage there, or I don't know exactly what you all have planned, but we're willing to put in a, a turnout. That way, in the future, if it develops into a park, well, you have irrigation rights to irrigate.
All right, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Yes. Item number eighteen, discussion and action to adopt Resolution five forty-four that where the City of Socorro pledges to support this initiative that the El Paso County Water Improvement District for their grant application to the Section four oh four Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for Disaster Declaration, FEMA dash forty-three thirty-two dash DR dash TX for structural improvements to culverts in the Mesa Drain and Mesa Spur Drain.
After Hurricane Harvey last year, the governor has appropriated one point, one point six billion dollars to deal with Harvey. And then any money left over from that will be distributed to other grant applications. We have filed a, a grant application. We'd like you all's endorsement on it because it'll be an upgrade to our Mesa Spur Drain and our Mesa Drain that, as you all know, we all utilize to, to rid ourselves of stormwater that comes off north of the interstate. And this is a, a thirty million dollar grant application. It's a matching fund by us of seven and a half million dollars that we will do with our equipment and manpower. And we will be upgrading all the culverts, as you all well know, that need to be upgraded. There's forty-five of them. And the state only requirement is, is that we do the project all the way from Loop three seventy-five all the way to Torneo, where it feeds back into the river. So we've been working with the railroad, because there's, there's one that, that needs to go into the railroad tracks. We did eight others with a railroad two years ago. We were very successful in doing it. It's, it's a tedious operation because, you know, you've got the trains coming by, the train passes, they unhook the section that, that you're gonna work on, remove the tracks. Then they give us so many hours to do our work, and then they have to replace the track back. So it, it's, it takes a lot of coordination. That's, that'll probably be our biggest challenge. The other ones, we're used to doing them all the time. The other ones, we're used to doing them all the time, as you all well know, so I don't think there'll be a problem. And what we're asking for is an adoption of a resolution by you all supporting us on this.
Mayor.
And this will assist us in the onion field excavation and all that. I mean, because once they replace the coverts, then we'll be able to work together.
So I would like to...
Mr. Rodriguez?
I would like to adopt resolution five forty-four, where the City of Socorro pledges to support on the EPC WID one for their grant application for Section four oh four Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program for Disaster Declaration, number FEMA dash four three three two dash DR dash TX. Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to adopt resolution five forty-five that where the City of Socorro pledges to support this initiative that the El Paso County Water Improvement District for their grant application to the Texas Water Development Board Flood Protection Grant Program for fiscal year two thousand eighteen for a feasibility study reviewing the use of El Paso County Water Improvement District's drain system to mitigate flooding.
Motion to approve resolution five forty, or rather, to adopt resolution five forty-five?
Second. Good. Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action on the final part approval for Vista Bonita State Subdivision Unit One being a portion of Track Five, Block Twenty-Four, San Luis Santiago.
Make at this time, make a motion to postpone. Due to the meeting, there was some stuff that they're going to work out, they're going to iron out, and then they'll bring it back. So I suggest that, I don't want to be wasting our residents' time. If it's not going to be able to be ready next meeting, we'll just bring it back when it is, so that they won't be coming here all the time because it's their time. That's what I would suggest.
And the only reason it was there is because we didn't want to make sure that we forgot about it.
Yes.
And it falls through the cracks. So I think that's why we were placing it, just so we can keep you all updated of what's going on with that item.
Mr. Nevares?
But I think we're at a point where the residents and the developer are meeting, and so, and I don't think that you're going to let us forget about it either, so I think that if that's okay with them, you know, that way we don't just, you know.
And we do have a speaker for that item.
Mr. Salsido?
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez, and staff as well. I appreciate you all taking note of this, and, you know, it's really important to us. The dilemma was in the wording, it just wasn't there. We came to an agreement with the Conde Engineering this week and lawyers, that they stating that they would include the rock wall regardless of the lump sum money that was entered into that agreement. They normally do not specify each item, but for peace of mind, we wanted them to include this on there. And it seems like we've come to an agreement, they agreed that they would reword it to meet our needs so that we could be properly represented in that manner. Now, I'm not here to stir anything up or anything. How can I say this? I'm not warning anybody or anything, but the money's allocated for this improvement on this roadway, I don't think it's adequate. We might view that, I'm thinking, it's a little shy, just from my experience working in the industry, in the gas industry, thirty-eight years, I've got a feel for what's out there and what's not out there, and the cost, the rising cost of materials.
Mr. Salsido, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we're delaying until we get that done?
Yeah, we're postponing it until, until, yes, the document is ready.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Aye.
We just have two more items and then we'll go ahead and move to executive.
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action and approval to include on the thoroughfare plan roundabouts at Moon and Old Weko, Stockyard and Sierra Azul, Socorro Road and Win, Socorro Road and Moon, and Socorro Road and Bovi.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
This is something that, we were addressing this issue about safety and speeding and all of this, this is one of the deterrents. Tech Dot's going to have some category eight monies available that we could be able to apply, but we have to put it in a plan so that they can, you know, take it out of our and say, hey, we're going to go ahead and allocate some money for this. The good thing is, is that this doesn't go into the MPO with the exception, only to program it on category eight monies. It doesn't mean that we're going to have to, we're still going to have to apply, but we're not going to have to go into the MPO and with all the rest of the municipality start to fight for this funding. You know, this is something different, this is something where we will pay eight percent. Usually when we get grants or we go to the MPO and have monies, it's an eighty-twenty. This is going to be a ninety-ten, but since we, you know, we don't have that much money, we can actually have an additional seven percent decrease on that ten percent. We don't bank on it, all we're saying is that we have a ninety-twenty, we're responsible for ten, and we can actually try to apply for the additional seven. If we do, we will save more money than we're due doing now. So this is a great plan, I think that we should add it on, and then we'll start, you know, rolling projects.
Mr. Perez?
All right, just for disclosure, two things, Win Road is where I live on, that's my road, but I don't, I, as well as all the other community members stand to benefit, as I discussed with other members of the city council, the Socorro is only a two-lane road with a passing lane, or turning lane, excuse me. Well, in recent years, it's become a passing lane, and so it's become very dangerous. And there's, and the curve has already been, people have already died, as a matter of fact, in that curve before hitting Win Road where the Socorro mission is, that's one. And then the others are also in District Three, some Moon and Socorro and Bovi and Socorro, and again, these are areas that are, if you ever travel through there in the mornings, it is very dangerous. And so we have kids there and so it's just, I know some of my constituents are going to say, well, what are you doing? You know, we're slowing us down, but on the flip side, it's an overall security, well, safety issue that we need to address. So, all right, that's all.
And just to mention that Socorro Road is a Texas highway?
Yes.
So Tech Dot would have to...
And category eight money comes from Tech Dot.
Correct.
So they will look at those as well. So all we were doing is putting them in the plan, and then they will determine which projects they want to do first. Yes.
Mr. Alamos?
I just want to commend, thank for this item, for looking into it. A few weeks back, we were thinking of, you know, this can't be done, and here it is, putting our heads together, putting your heads together and coming, you know, finding a way, and this is the way we should operate, and I commend whoever, all those that were involved, and thank you.
We will find money, I've always said that.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colomvila.
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action to approve major thoroughfare plan?
Mayor, since we did add these, could we postpone it until they add them to the thoroughfare plan and then bring it back? Or do we just add it, we just approve it with the add-ons? That's what I'm saying.
I think since we still have them here, let's kind of hear their presentation and then we can just direct them to add the roundabouts and then we can adopt it.
Okay.
So motion to approve the...
Well, I would say to postpone it because we can't, we can't add, we need to add that we just added them on, so the plan that they're presenting doesn't have them.
But I think we can direct them to...
Yes, so what we could do is say, postpone it, bring it back until it's in there, and then we can address that issue.
Okay, all right, well, good evening, Mayor.
I guess one thing we could do, consider is, you know, you want to add them on as an addendum, if you approve everything else, possibly as an addendum to the thoroughfare plan, maybe that's another consideration.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word you said.
I'm sorry, we could consider adding the additional intersections as an addendum to the thoroughfare plan also. If you approve the rest of it, we can go back and do an addendum.
Okay.
All right, again, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Richard Ibarra with Danabomb Engineering, and I wanted to just kind of talk briefly on our two thousand and eighteen major thoroughfare plan for the City of Socorro. Also, to point out that we have, we do have a document, thoroughfare plan is just a simple map, but we have a lot of backup information in Cindy's binder right there. It's the traffic engineering study and it has all the real specific information that we're talking about here, so that includes that and a lot of other backup information. So I do tend to talk fast sometimes, so if I'm going through this, just raise your hand, don't feel, you know, interrupt me as needed to ask any questions as we go through this. I'll try to go through it pretty quick because it's not the most exciting content. Let's see, page down? Okay, all right. All right, so just briefly, the major thoroughfare plan serves as a long-range plan to identify major transportation facilities. It's developed and utilized as a planning tool to identify your existing infrastructure and maybe new updates and identify new roadway connections that's going to be needed to meet the needs of the city. The adoption of the MTP will serve to aid in transportation planning, provide the community with authority to help you with your right-of-way planning and give you something to take to help you with coordination with local and regional entities. Okay, so I don't know how well you can see that, but that's a kind of snapshot of the thoroughfare plan. I'll go into some of the classifications in a little bit more detail, but, you know, just in general, the red lines denote what we've identified as the principal arterial. And again, the major thoroughfare plan is kind of our, you know, it's the ultimate configuration, if you will. So we have things shown, it's not there yet, but it's something that we want, for example, the border highway east is shown there. We have the blue lines denote minor arterials, the dark green are your collectors, and then some of the background black are kind of grayed out as you're, considered your local So functional classification of roadways that we just mentioned, beginning with the principal arterial, you're typically, theirs require right-of-way between seventy to one-hundred-and-twenty feet with the four to six lanes, and those are going to be your main arteries to get your traffic on. Next on the classification is your minor arterials, right-of-way ranges in size from sixty to one-hundred-and-ten feet, typically those are four lanes. The next down is your collector roads, sixty feet of right-of-way minimum, two to four lanes, and those serve as a connection between your local roads to your arterials. And then feeding your collectors are your local roads and streets, your neighborhood roads, those right-of-way widths vary, and those are typically two lanes. Whenever we started this, we collected data from the Texas Department of Transportation twenty twelve to obtain average daily traffic counts, which is the average, the amount of traffic on a road for a particular day. So as a rule of thumb, local roads typically see traffic in the range of less than fifteen-hundred vehicles per day. Collector roadways, again, are typically two to four lanes, and they range, serve between fifteen-hundred and twenty-five thousand vehicles, big range. And then, of course, your major arterials, those serve, you're looking at ADTs of between twelve thousand and forty thousand vehicles per day. So to kind of put that perspective on what we have on your local streets, we have a little summary of some of the major roadways. Again, this data was collected in twenty twelve, and then we projected it out to twenty sixteen, kind of when we started doing the study, and then we projected out a little bit further to twenty twenty-five to get kind of a little feel of what kind of traffic volumes we might be expecting. We did that based on, and again, the backup data is in the report, on a two percent growth factor, and that was based on some regional data that we had. And as expected, you can see that your major roadways are your north-south corridors, FM seventy-six, North Loop, Socorro Road, and Alameda, and then your east-west is a lot of heavy movement. We got, Moon has a lot of traffic and Horizon Boulevard, so. Just wanted to kind of show this to you guys and share this with you, this is kind of what we, what I've been using as our planning map. It kind of complements, supplements the major thoroughfare plan, but it gets into a little bit more detail as, you know, we're going through, and this will help us also prioritize projects, but it kind of gives a little snapshot of what's going on. Again, the major thoroughfare plan will show kind of the ultimate, our goal. So for example, the, I'm going to step over here. This, you can see, this blue line, we call it as an arterial one, since it's something that we're considering major east-west corridor, it's also the T-Mobile Boulevard extension. When you look at the major thoroughfare plan, it just shows a solid blue line, but that's not there. What's there now is a little piece, and here we've kind of denoted the dashed lines to show that's something that we can extend and kind of includes other locations too. Yeah, over here, but then I think I'm giving attention to the Rio Vista possibility, so...
I'm sorry, one more. Is there, is that a, he can't use the cursor on the talk?
Yes.
I'm sorry, because I can't see, so I have no idea where he...
Oh, okay, so to go back to, just talking about possibilities, you know, which we would like, again, you have good north, we got some good north-south corridors, but, you know, want to get some east-west movement, get people off those roads, get them to I-ten or get them to the future, the border highway east corridor. But to do that, you know, again, things that we looked at, and this is just almost any possibility, so we have Moon Road here, it could be extended, but Rio Vista, we looked at, that might be a possibility, but it just depends on what right-of-way, what other constraints that you run into. I don't know which one's the best at this point, but it's, we just kind of wanted to get it all on a drawing and something to, you know, base our discussion off of. Also on here, we have locations where we have potential, intersections where we've identified congested intersections, so they're denoted with a green dot, where we can do some intersection improvements, and I'll go into that a little bit later. And then also roundabout discussions, which are the green, I know you're not going to be able to see it here, but maybe later on the map, we've known those as a green dot with the black dot in the middle. So just something that y'all, we can look at more, but wanted to just put that in front of you. About, I want to say, almost about a year, probably a little bit less than a year ago, we were here and we presented our methodology on how we kind of, as traffic engineers, how we analyze a facility and how we kind of determine how it's operating, just to kind of give us an idea of what, exactly how it's operating. So I'm going to try to gloss through this real quick, but I just wanted to bring it up, some new faces here, but again, everything that I'm going to go through here is in detail in the traffic study that we have there. But when we first got this, you know, analyzing the city, first thing we wanted to do is we wanted to collect existing roadway and intersection data and collect the geometric configuration at intersection, how many lanes are there? Is there a right-turn lane, left-turn lane, is it signalized, stop-controlled? Once we identified some target intersections, we collect existing traffic data, which is typically in the form of turning movement counts during peak hour times. The peak hour times are in the morning, from seven to nine, and in the evening from five, from four to six. We get that because that's usually where we base our design, we design for kind of almost the worst-case scenario, so when we analyze intersections, we're analyzing for those peak times. And we also collect the twenty-four-hour count data, which is the ADT that I mentioned earlier along the corridor. There was a... There was, uh, three conditions that we, that we analyzed. We analyzed the existing condition, which we can, in this case, when we took the traffic count data, which is, was in twenty sixteen. Then we look at, we, we pick a design year to analyze to compare it against. In this case, we considered the, uh, the no-bill twenty forty. What no-bill means is if you take the traffic volume from twenty sixteen, project those volumes to twenty forty and then analyze that intersection with all that new traffic, but with no improvements, how's it operating? And then we look at a twenty, uh, uh, build-out condition, twenty forty, and then we, we apply some improvements and see if we can make that, um, improve that level of service. And I'll talk about the level of service, um, here in a bit. Um, so the, the three major corridors that we, um, studied were Socorro, Alameda and North Loop Drive. And then we took some other, um, random, I think, uh, Waco, Old Waco Tanks Road and Moon Road. So we took some ra, random, um, um, intersections that weren't necessarily on those corridor, but, uh, some of it based on the, after the meeting we had, you gotta ask, go out and check out some other intersections also. I think I kinda hit on those other topics already. Um, so here's an example of, uh, you know, an existing, um, diagrams that we prepared of, this one's at, um, Baumann Road and North Loop Drive. You can see the one on the left is the, um, existing condition, which is a stop-controlled on Baumann and free flow up and down North Loop. And then, once we analyzed it, we found that the level of service went down for the folks that had the stop at Baumann, they just weren't being able to get any gaps. So we targeted this one as a, as a signalization improvement, so this is some kind of the configuration, you know, we just, um, you know, add, added some, uh, traffic signals to that. These are the maps that we prepared for all the, um, each corridor, for all the cross-streets that we collected the data from. And this, what you're looking at here, this is, uh, Socorro Road. These are all the intersections that we ca, um, collected turning movement count data. And it shows in the, um, again, I know it's hard to see, in the bubble though, there's a two numbers. The first number is the AM peak hour and then the one in parentheses is the evening. Um, we took those and we made, um, um, diagrams like this for, for each, each corridor. And then we had a, a corresponding one for twenty forty, same thing with, with the traffic volumes, but with the growth factor applied to them. So to do, to do our capacity analysis, we used a, um, simulation program called Synchro nine point one. And what it does, it, it models, um, that you put in your traffic data, I'll show some visuals here in a little bit. And what you're trying to do is calculate, um, what, what the measurable, in this case, is delay. And it's based on criteria, uh, industry standard, highway capacity manual, to determine a level of service. Level of service is determined, um, measured by the average vehicle delay at an intersection as a whole. Um, and most, and I'll show a chart of what the level of service categories are, but most agencies consider level of service D to be the, um, minimal acceptable level of service. After that, it's considered unacceptable. And here's a ta, a table showing that. Uh, it's the grading scale is, uh, level of service A is the best. And as you go from B to C to D, um, you can, the, the, it gets, it gets worse as you go from A all the way down to F. And then the numbers that you see in the middle there, those, those are correspond to vehicle delay in seconds per vehicle. And even though this isn't a signalized intersection, this is kind of just a, a rhetorical, pictorial of, you know, level of service A, low density, hardly any traffic. And just as you go from B to C to D, things get more congested, um, volume gets heavy and then, you know, up to a level of service F. Okay. So again, presented in our study is, there's tables for, uh, analysis results for all the intersections along each corridor. What we're looking at here is Socorro Road. Uh, so you can see we have existing twenty sixteen, um, information, uh, with the level of service, the vehicle delay. Then you can see as you go to the twenty forty no-bill, you can see that the level of services deteriorate and in some cases are operated at unacceptable level of services. And then we, with roadway improvements and what we do, and I'll go over that in just the next slide, um, see how we can improve those level of service in the future. Okay. And some of the, uh, roadway improvements that we did, uh, some, sometimes it can be as, uh, simple as adding a left and right turn lane and optimizing or coordinating your signal system along your corridor, which, um, would be very curious. I wonder if we could really do something with that, 'cause if you, when, the last time you've analyzed the signals, but things get outside, you'd be surprised how much you can, just by upgrading your detection, um, your coordination between the signals, how that might be able to help, you know, at least improve some of that level of service. So you're not having to get into the more expensive and that is, of course, adding lanes, um, and, you know, increasing, um, adding left turn lanes and such, al, along, you know, in between the intersections. Of course, other mitigation is signalizing, unsignalized intersections, um, constructing roundabouts and, um, of course, and other roadway, and other roadway improvements and how that might affect the ones that are existing now. Uh, for example, if you improve this road over here, maybe that attracts traffic, which alleviates it on, on the road that you're on. So you always wanna consider what's happening, you know, around the roads that you're, you're working on. Okay. So as an example, this is, um, Alameda at North Moon and it existing, so you can see the, the video there, um, how it's, close to about how it's operating today. And then the same location in twenty forty, if we just project traffic, you can see there's significant, um, backing up, especially on the intersecting street on Moon Road. You can see that backed up significantly and there's a lot more congestion on the, uh, uh, Long, uh, Alameda Avenue. And then, of course, if we make some signal improvements... I think the one on the bottom now is going, a, and really, this is one where probably there's not much you can do except add some more capacity on the cross-streets and kinda try to alleviate that cross-traffic. Which it... Still is kinda busy. Okay. So I know roundabouts have come up, so I wanted to give a little, um, just hit some highlights on roundabouts, uh, this, we can have a, a two-hour conversation on this. They're, they're very complex, but I'm a fan of them, so I'm glad that you guys are considering them, uh, for sure. But just, you know, kind of, in general, roundabouts are, um, if they're put in the right place, more, or, um, and under the right conditions, are definitely more efficient than a signalized intersection. Uh, you mentioned safety, um, so they're definitely, um, safer than your typical signalized intersections. Um, a two-lane, four-way intersection has thirty-two conflict points, as you can see in the, in the chart right there. And, uh, twenty-four pedestrian, potential pedestrian conflicts. A roundabout has eight, uh, vehicle conflicts and eight pedestrian conflicts. Um, and then if there is a collision, the way, um, you know, roundabouts are designed, they're almost, they're almost in and of themselves a traffic calming device because they force you to angle out and kinda enter the roundabout. You don't go straight in. So you're having to slow down before you enter the roundabout. So once you're in there, if there is a collision, it's low speed and, you know, likely not, um, you know, not too severe. Um, low maintenance, you, if you, you know, signal, you have to maintain the signal, you have electricity that you have to deal with, um, people hit your equipment, um, so there's definitely a, a maintenance, um, advantage there. Um, the biggest negative of a roundabout is the right-of-way that they require. And we'll look at some of the, um, some of that in just a second. Okay. Um, so many roundabouts have kinda taken on, um, and I've been hearing a lot about in the last, especially years, um, two, three years, um, becoming popular. Uh, many roundabouts are used, um, in definitely lower speed, thirty-five miles per hour for one-lane approaches. Um, the key to them is you want, um, they have to have low truck volumes because by having a mini roundabout, you're taking that circle, you're making it smaller. So this is why this works really well in, in a neighborhood, um, and, and local roads. I noticed that y'all have a roundabout, um, on Stock, Stockyard? Is that right? Thing's big. Um, but I wonder if, if we could have made, maybe had a, if a mini roundabout would've worked there, 'cause I think there's another one that you're, that wanted to consider down the road. Um, so I like this picture because this, this is in a, in a neighborhood similar to what you see. It's just a, it's a, it's in a neighborhood, um, just two lanes in each direction and it looks like they didn't need to, um, acquire that much right-of-way. Um, some of the thresholds for a mini roundabout are, um, the total entering volumes, um, needs to be less than sixteen hundred vehicles per hour and the inscribed circle dynamic, diameter, and I'll show the, that, what that is on the next slide, um, is typically between eighty to a hundred feet. So... So what that eighty to a hundred feet is exact, is the inscribed diameter that you see right here. So for a mini roundabout, that was eighty to a hundred. Now, when we get into a single-lane roundabout, this is what, what more typical, um, that , um, inner, um, inscribed diameter increases to about one fifteen to a hundred and fifty feet. And then that, and the consequence of that is now you need, uh, probably more right-of-way. And the capacity, it's similar to what was before, eighteen hundred, but if you have a high truck traffic, you don't wanna use a mini, then, you know, we have, you know, single, uh, lane roundabouts are what we're gonna, needs to be implemented. And then when we go to multi-lane roundabouts, um, that inscribed circle diameter increases, it can go from one fifty to, you know, two fifty. Two fifty obviously being the really big three-lane ones, but this is, here is a, a typical, uh, two-lane, uh, roundabout, um, configuration. So here's, uh, some potential roundabout locations. Obviously, you've, um, brought some new ones up, um, so we'll definitely include that into, into the, uh, into the engineering report. Um, but here's some that we identified, uh, prior to, uh, that might be good candidates. Um, I particularly like a lot of the one, uh, North Moon and, uh, Old, uh, Waco Tanks Road, I think is one that is like a perfect location for one. I like the, the three, the three-legged ones, seem to work really well. Um, they're, not only because you don't have that fourth leg coming in, um, but, you know, you got, um, adva, um, favorable volumes on there. So three-legged ones are, um, are, are first ones that I tried to target. A good one on Socorro is at Bovie and, because you, Bovie Road comes in, it comes in at, at a skew. And typically at an intersection, those are, those cause problems. You try to wanna come in at a ninety degree, but a, a ride, um, a roundabout handles skews very well. They, they kinda flow and they're pretty good. So I identified that as a location. Um, I know we're talking about Socorro, um, and there'll, those'll be some locations, but I know Socorro's got some right-of-way, um, um, challenges that'd have to be considered on there. But, um, with that, this is, uh, Moon Road at Old Waco Tanks Road. Right now, it, uh, operates as a three-way, uh, stop sign intersection. And you can see, it's not, it's not terrible, but there's definitely some, um, you know, some queuing of traffic. And then if you put a roundabout, people don't have to stop, they can kinda free-flow. That's why, that's why the three-legged, there's not a lot of, uh, interact, interactive traffic, you know, with, with three as opposed to four. Um, and in this case, you can see that it's, and this is the same volumes, it works, it looks, it works a lot better. One thing I also like about roundabouts is how they function, you know, all the things you're looking at is during the peak hours, but I love having roundabouts in the non-peak hour, 'cause we've all been at a stoplight in the middle of the day and you're the only one there and no one else is there. I mean, roundabouts are always flowing, you never have to stop. So operationally, I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm glad that we're, y'all are considering them, so... All right. I think with that, um, any questions?
Monsieur Alamos?
I'm just curious, because I, I personally think, uh, Passmore and Socorro really needs a roundabout because the school's there, it's a one-way, uh, or it's a two-way lane and it, and at six-thirty, seven o'clock, it is impossible, uh, because you have people coming in from, from, uh, from Clans, Socorro, San Neni, using that one roadway. Um, and I was just curious why, you know, why that area, and I know it's small, that the street is really small, really narrow, but I think it would alleviate all the traffic that we're having out there because we don't have, we being, I, you know, that's my district. They don't have easy access to the highway or to the freeway or to... So I was just curious, yeah, why it wouldn't be a perfect fit or, or was it, or would, did you just look at certain areas and that was it?
No, no, we, we can definitely look at it. Uh, one of the reasons that Text Dot has not done a whole lot of improvements on, on Socorro is because of the, the environmental, uh, challenges with it. There, there's a historical, a lot of historical structures out there, the right-of-ways is restricted. But we'll look at that intersection as well, Passmore and, and, uh, and Socorro and, and all of them. And, and we'll definitely, uh, report to see which ones maybe have some, uh, I guess, some restrictions in terms of environmental or, but that, that's, that's one that definitely, yeah, we, we probably could look at as well.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the major thoroughfare plan with, and to have as an addendum those streets that we identified for consideration.
Second.
On item twenty-two.
On item twenty-two.
Second. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Sisto Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you.